Let's go start going. Everybody please try, we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening, everyone. Beautiful day out there for November. Remember, as we go through our agenda tonight, please keep in mind our mission and our vision statements as we make decisions throughout the agenda. So I'd like to say Seth Garland tonight for being our video man, a person today so we can, everybody can see us. Looked to call the meeting to order here and we do have a, we have a, what do I want to call it? Quorum, thank you. Thanks for the help. Hearing of delegations, we have men, we need a motion then to approve the agenda and I don't believe there's been any changes. So move it. Thanks, Tom, you have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Brent, we have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Agenda approved. Moving into communications to the board and tonight we have some of the best dressed individuals will, that usually come to the board member or meetings and we have our FFA members going to talk about their national convention trip.
Well, thank you for giving us the opportunity. My name is Betsy Becker, I'm the agricultural education and FFA advisor here at Algonah High School. In October 30th, we traveled down to Indianapolis with North Iowa FFA chapters, North Union, and we also added Iowa Valley this year out of Marengo. We changed things up a little bit. We toured, we took a day and toured down in Louisville, Kentucky on Wednesday. And so we caught a couple of different tours and the kids will be talking about that. And then I'll finish up with some details from the year that we've done so far. So I believe Paige is up first.
My name is Paige Philata and I'm a senior. So the first tour that we took was to the Louisville Slugger Museum and the actual Louisville Slugger production started in 1884 when they started making bats for professional baseball players. The, there's only a couple of requirements for a tree to become like into a good bat and that is for the tree to be roughly 65 years old and it to be perfectly straight. And then it, they can get around 60 billets per tree, which is the billet actually turns into the bat, it's just like the before, before the bat. And then fewer than 15% of the billets actually get made into MLB bats. And then there are three different types of wood that they make the bats out of, which is maple, which is the hardest and more dense. Oak bats become more flexible and stronger the more that you use them. And then ash bats are the most flexible, but then they're trying to find an alternative because of the Emerald Ash Bore problem. And then it takes 45 or 48 seconds to turn an actual bat, so they turn it from the billets to the actual bat. And then 85% of the bats are made from maple trees. And then the grain of the wood and how they, which grain they put forth actually makes a difference on how strong the bat can be, can turn into. And then major league players often order almost 100 bats per their seasons. And then we had a great time at this museum and coming from a softball player, it was awesome to see the museum. And my dad has actually been here three times and so to go for my first time was pretty cool. And then at the end of the tour, we actually got to take home a little mini bat as a souvenir, so that was pretty cool as well.
They get six bats per tree. A 65-year-old tree, six bats. No, 60, but they only 15% make it to. That's quality.
Okay, so my name is Kara Roder and I'm a junior. So Churchill Downs is one of the racetracks in the Triple Crown. The track is 1.25, 1.25 miles in length and the Kentucky Derby is always run on the first Saturday in May. Out of the whole, out of like the history of the race, only three fillies have won, which is a female horse. At the Kentucky Derby, there are 150,000 people in attendance, that is including the stands and the infield. The horse secretary holds records at all three Triple Crown tracks. The track does four distinct turns and two straightaways and has been unchanged since the facility opened in 1909. And we were fortunate enough to be able to see like one race happen as we were there.
Okay, and then for our first general session was, which was basically the thing that kicked off our convention. So we had the pleasure of hearing from our keynote speaker Juan Bandana and the U.S. Secretary of Agriculture, Tom Vilsack. And to start off, the Secretary of Agriculture gave his remarks on behalf of the Biden administration and then he was awarded and presented his honorary American degree for five years and of his Secretary of Agriculture position. And then our keynote speaker, main ideas was from Juan. He told us that we all have things that make, get in the way of being our confident selves. Great ideas are just ideas, but they also require action to actually become something. And then we don't need to try and please people whose opinions do not matter. And then one quote that I really took away from his was strive for progress and not perfection. And then there was one story that really resonated with us from Juan and that was the story of Pepe. Juan was on a vacation to somewhere where he went horseback riding and all of his family got regular horses and he got a pony to ride. So they were on this trail and Juan came upon a snake in the pathway with his pony and Pepe, his pony immediately stopped and like didn't do anything and stood his ground for, to the snake and waited. And then the snake just slithered away, not caring about the animal that was 10 times bigger than him. So we learned that to be like Pepe and stand our ground in conflict instead of backing down.
Hello, my name is Carley Allen. I'm a senior at Algonah High School and I'm also the treasurer of the Algonah FFA. So me and Paige had the privilege to walk across the National FFA stage to receive the National Chapter Award. It is designed to recognize FFA chapters that are actively, actively implement the missions and strategies of the organization. In order to qualify for a state or national award, your chapter must complete at least 15 activities. One for each of the five quality standards in each of the three divisions. Additionally, the chapter must meet the minimum requirements as outlined in the National Quality Chapter Standards. Chapters are rewarded for providing educational experiences for the entire membership. Chapters that receive a gold rating by their state FFA associations are eligible to compete for the National FFA three-star, two-star, and one-star ratings. We received the two-star rating this year.
Hello, my name is Dietrich Schnuders. I'm in ninth grade and we went to the rodeo. There were two teams, the Team Dodge that were blue shirt riders and Team Renegade that were red shirt riders. The comm was entertaining as well as his role to keep the riders safe. And the three stuff we watched were saddle bronc, bar back, and bull riding. Top rider from each team competed against each other in the final round. We were on the Team Dodge and at the end, our riders won the rodeo.
Hello, my name is Tucker Bronsvold. In my workshop, Know Your Worth and Getting To Where You Want To Go, we learned how to communicate to new people. In Getting To Where You Want To Go, we learned how to write a resume and get a new job using the STAR method. Situation, task, action, and result. In Know Your Worth, we learned how to talk to new people without being scared because the person you are talking to is probably just about as scared as you. These are some of the things I have learned in the workshops from FFA convention.
I'm Hannah Perez, I'm a freshman here at Algonah High. And one of the workshops I went to was the U.S. Army Veterinarian Camp Career. And the veterinarian program all started with the Revolutionary War and in World War I, the Army animals expanded to dogs, horses, camels, pigeons, dolphins, and more. So the veterans, they normally do just preventative and routine care, emergency trauma care, kennel inspections, feral animal, animal control, and rabid control. And the dolphins actually detect underwater bombs and foreign divers in our water. And being a veteran in the Army has many bonuses such as full medical and dental plan and care, low-cost life insurance, a retirement plan, 30 days of paid vacation, and more.
Hi, I'm Melissa Engel and I went to a workshop called Leadership is Influence. First, we watched a social experiment video where a guy was wearing a uniform and he asked people to help him and nine out of 10 times, nine out of the 10 people complied, but when he changed into, into street clothes, everyone walked right on by. So that shows that appearing confident or authoritative makes a better chance for your audience to listen to you. We also learned five rules in influence. At the bottom, they put it in a pyramid. At the bottom is the authoritarian, a person who takes control and enforces obedience. The friend, the person to include you into the conversation. Next is the coach, the encouraging person to guide you. The mentor to teach and guide you toward your strengths. And the Jedi, you want to mirror their confidence and they are the most influential. We also learned two types of influence, which transactional, transactional influence, it's like a you do something for me, I do something for you kind of situation and that's it. And a transformational influence is like you're a family and you support each other.
Okay, so FFA members were, had the chance to tour the career and college fair. So it's basically like four of our high school gyms and it's packed full with different colleges and businesses, just trying to get more people to learn about what they have to offer there. So you, I was able to talk to many different colleges and see what programs they had to offer as well as meet with like KSIH and other like right into workplace experiences as well.
So you can see that we're missing a few students and I do due to illness and other things, they weren't able to be here. But while we're there, we keep them very engaged, not only with agriculture, but also with career and college readiness. We took five freshmen and four of them were here tonight, so it's, it's not easy to do what they just did, especially talking in front of people that they don't know well. So we work on those employability skills every day in class. Next year, the convention's going to be a week earlier, it's going to be back on schedule again. It'll be the 23rd to the 26th back in Indianapolis. In fact, it'll be there through 2031. So it's going to be there for a bit. We do appreciate you allowing us to go to convention, allowing us to take time away from the classroom. I think the things that they pick up on these trips are just as valuable in different ways. Seeing them interact with other students, we had an interaction where we were between tours in Louisville and we were kind of checking out to pay for a meal and this older couple came up to me and she says, I just want to comment on the table of girls that you had there, students and how well they interacted, they talked to us. We didn't know them and I, so I, when I got on the bus, I went, all right, which of you had this opportunity to talk to this couple? And Carley goes, it was me. Oh, Paige, sorry Paige, sorry. But she said they were really nice people and they were just talking and she started the conversation with them. So you think about it, we're in a different state in an area that nobody knows us, maybe it's easier, maybe it's not, but they still, they still do the right things even when we're away from, from the campus here at Algonah. So I just wanted to let you know that it's important that they do the right thing and, and have the respect and integrity regardless of what we have on and where we're at. A couple of updates from the ag department that I'm going to share with you real quickly. In 2023, it was, it's been a pretty busy year. We had eight FFA Iowa degree recipients. We had a couple of students at the state leadership conference do the freshman quiz. Jaden Spear was the runner-up in the proficiency of small animals. She was also a star in agribusiness with her Iowa degree, with her, her SAE of, of dog grooming. Our farm business management team got a gold, our team ag sales team was a silver, a poultry contest was a silver, and then our Envirothon, we were the third place FFA team about three points from qualifying for a national event again. So it wasn't too bad for that. Coming up, we had the Iowa State Fair and the Cassuth County Fair, our district soils team in the fall. We won the district contest, went to state and finished 15th in the state. And then we've got some opportunities for some winter livestock judging, which there, and all of these CDEs or career development events, they're improving their reasoning, their critical thinking skills. And a lot of these contests are on Saturdays, so they're giving up time to do this. So I have to say that it's, it's pretty good on their part to represent themselves and the school very well. The next slide kind of talks about, and you really can't see it well, I'll just tell you some things. We have about 98 members in the FFA chapter, whether they're in, in school or out of school. We keep them active in case those out of school members want to do their American degree. Of the 75 in-school members, we had 106 projects. We totaled 8,800 SAE hours. Now these SAEs, you might know them better as work-based learning, if that resonates a little better for you. 8,826 hours that they journaled. We did 441 contest hours this last year, 62 contest activities. Our SAE income thus far is $37,000, but the kids are actively entering their hours from the fall, getting caught up. Last year, our income was 110, almost $111,000. Economic input, this is going back to the community with $71,526. The value that these kids are doing and giving back to the community with their community service and everything that they own. So it's significant what they're doing and, and how they're doing it. The last thing I have for you is what questions do you have for myself or the FFA members?
I don't know if it's a question, but it's always great to hear. I know you go to Indianapolis and a lot of the same tours, but always you hear something a little bit different about it that they take away.
We try and find different trips for them so that way they don't see the same thing. I've seen the Indianapolis Motor Speedway probably a dozen times, but that's okay. For these guys to keep it fresh, next year we'll probably be touring back in the Indianapolis area, just because if there's any carryover, then it's new tours for them.
How many times have you guys been?
I've been twice, twice.
Once.
Once.
And how many total did you say you took this year?
We took nine this year.
Nine?
Yep, so. Any other questions?
Wonderful presentation.
Yeah, great job.
Thank you. Great job.
Thank you.
You bet, thank you. All right, we'll continue to move on then. Our next item is the consent items. You probably should have all received them in your packets. I know Lisa's put also some additional invoices in front of you. Was there any questions? Tom, it's not answered, Joe, you have any comments?
Yeah, there's, I'm gonna, there's lots of great information in there. I'm gonna kind of highlight three reports that I think are important to closely look at each month. The first one is the monthly ending fund balances. Always valuable to review that report to see our specific accounts. For example, the insurance fund right here. 2019, when I started, we were about $500,000 in this, in this fund. We want to make sure we have enough in there. We have more than enough. That helps us make decisions on our, our insurance on, on an annual basis, but we've had some great years in there that's led us to that. You know, our save, this is our revenue, revenue bonds will come from the save fund, which is the one cent sales tax, PEPAL, which is the property fund. So just looking at those on a, on a month-to-month basis. The second one is the revenue and expenses. If you look at for October, '22, '23, our expenses were 1.6 million, they're, they're higher now. We would expect our expenses to go up as salaries increases unless we have less staffing, but our revenues are also up. So they, just to compare those two things, I think is important that you'll see that our Laverne accounts are merged into these dollars. Actually, right here, should we look at? In October, which changed our totals quite a bit from the totals in September. Always, you know, we want our, our revenues to exceed our expenses as they, they do in this total, although we, we know in this school year, our expenses will exceed our revenues. We can predict that and that's mostly due to our, our certified number, which I'll go through in my report, is higher this year, but we get that money next year. But we, that's not a problem. And this last one, the cash in bank is a good example of why, is that we have a strong fund balance. It's over, over 4.5 million right here. That's with the Laverne cash added, you can see that in comparison. Last month, I talked about that, that balance, how it was significantly smaller from the year before and that's just we lost Esser dollars for the first time in 36 months. So we're, we're very, very healthy in those reports. So those are three reports I think you can look at every month that, that help us kind of gauge our, our financial health and how we're doing.
Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none, we need a motion then to approve the consent items. Thanks Andrea, do we have a second?
Second to motion.
Thanks, Tom. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent items approved. Joe, I guess we'll come back to you and go right into superintendent's report.
Superintendent's report, certified enrollment, October 1st is the, is the date that you count students, but it's a couple of week process before you're actually certified in that enrollment. So reviewing that in comparison to last year, our certified enrollment is up over 104 students. That's due to the reorganization with Laverne. That number is very, very important to us. It's that, that is the number that provides our per pupil funding for the 2024, 2025 school year next year. Overall, we actually have a little over seven fewer students in our buildings, in our classrooms than we did the previous year, although our funding number is much, much higher. I would anticipate that our, our enrollment will drop the next two years. We'll graduate a class of 119 and 130. Oh, you know, we won't have kindergarten numbers that are that big. So we will see an enrollment drop the next two years. A new line appears in certified enrollment this year that hasn't before. Where the number of students who live in your district that are funded by an educational savings account, we have 146 resident students who are funded by an educational savings account and attend a private school. This year, any student enrolled in a public school, the previous year who attends non-public and whose family has a household of income of 300% of the federal poverty guidelines were eligible, next year that number grows to 400%. So where we have 146 this year, that will grow next year. There are no guidelines in the third year, so that 146 number will, will continue to grow. That's significant for us as we receive categorical funding for all of those students. Categories like tag, TLC funding, professional development. In, in total, the categoricals equal about $1,200 per pupil. So $1,200 times however many kids are receiving those ESAs. This year it's 146 is, is new funding for us. So comparing our certified enrollment.
So how, how do you anticipate our enrollment changing based on the change for?
We had, there's five students who attended Algonah schools last year who attend Garrigan this year. So relatively low. I wouldn't anticipate there to be a lot of change.
Is there with those educational savings counts, is it, it has to be an accredited school, correct? It can't be used towards?
Yep.
Anything else other than an accredited school?
Correct. Yep.
And there's a lot of private schools that would not be accredited, like smaller?
There are. Our local ones are, but there certainly are private schools that aren't accredited.
But you don't anticipate it affecting our enrollment much? I mean, time will tell, but.
Time will tell. Year one, you know, this question was asked a lot last year during the legislative session. Administratively, we talked about it. We did not anticipate a large change and we didn't see a large change.
I mean, do we see that historically between our school and Garrigan where it goes back and forth? I mean, cause I've, I've seen kids that'll be Garrigan kids that'll move towards?
Yeah.
Algonah just for different needs and vice versa.
But I would, I would agree with you. I would say having five students who attend Garrigan this year that attended us last year, that, that would not be abnormal from a normal year. Same thing, you know, with some students.
Cause we could pick up five next year.
Good.
That, that just depends.
Yeah. So time will tell, but we did not see a change, drastic change this year. Some of our certified comparisons, the resident kids attending our district, up 85, that's up over 120 over the last three years. The actual enrollment, this is your certified number, this is the big one, that's up 104 and up over 129 over the last three years. I put in red here, we have 119 seniors and 130 juniors, just to, to show I would anticipate this number going down the next two school years. Our open enrolled in went from, went down from 154 to 119. That, that's about, negative 35 is about the number of students who we previously had open enrolled in from Laverne. So those are now resident kids. So we anticipated that number going down, tuitioned in. So now on that whole grade share, we had 53, we have zero now, as those are now resident students. Our pre-K4 students attending statewide voluntary preschool, it's up nine. Mr. Stewart online, we just talked about this morning, I think we have 87 four-year-olds in our preschool program. You know, these are not, this is the funding number, not the number of students. I do believe there'll be a legislative push to fully fund preschool. I met with Representative Stone last Wednesday and that's certainly one of his initiatives for this year. Total school age students in the district, this is, you know, this is our actual kids, we're, we're down. And I would, I would anticipate that number going down the next two years.
Because of the large graduating class sizes?
Yes, yes. Our, our preschool kindergarten numbers, they, they are not smaller than what we have had. We just had some areas of, you know, juniors and seniors, second and third, you know, where we have some bubbles of, of kids and that, that's just what we'll always have in our whole district. Last piece I want to talk about is classified staff early retirement program. Previous month, the, the board passed an early retirement program for our, our teachers with the intentions of having that in place for, for four years. The last time we did that in 2021, we passed an early retirement program for classified staff as well. In 2021, when we did that, to be eligible for the program, a person had 25 years of full-time service in the district. The benefit that was provided was 25% of their previous year earnings plus $25 per unused sick day. We have 10 current staff members who would be eligible this year. Replacing all 10 of those with an entry level wage for that, their positions would have savings of possibly about $80,000. The one-time cost of the program would be about $122,000. If, if the board is interested in this type of program, I could bring, I would recommend a cap of five years. We talk a lot about the teacher shortage, which certainly impacts our ability to hire, but there's a labor shortage just in general too. So having 10 of those positions gone in a year, I think would be very, very difficult for us. So I would certainly recommend a cap in this also. I could bring back a proposal in December if the board was interested, but wanted to give you guys the opportunity to have that discussion today.
How many staff people did it say that we would, oh, you have 10?
10. 10 are eligible.
Okay.
Yep.
Just this year?
This year.
This year.
And we would cap it at five per year?
Yes. Well, that's, that's what I would recommend if you were interested.
The entry level wage is 13, is that where we're at or we're?
13 for an associate, 15 for maintenance, secretary. Yeah, it's probably closer to 15.
I just, in my mind, thinking are we, you know, will we be a higher back at that entry level wage? Which, it's where we set it, so I understand that, but filling the roles at that entry level wage too.
I always get confused, classified is not teachers.
Correct.
And this is a new, because we didn't talk about this before.
We didn't, we didn't. The, we, teachers, we, we, this would be classified, not non-teachers. When we did this previously, we used some qualifications of 25 years of full-time service in the district. And then, you know, the same formula of 1% of their previous year multiplied by years of service, so it would be 25 for all of them.
So what's the change? Cause when we had talked about the unclassified, is that right?
Certified.
Certified, certified. Certified. There was concern about this and we decided, kind of briefly, that we weren't going to do it because we didn't think there'd be a cost savings.
Right.
But now.
Not substantial.
Yeah, and you know, the, the cost savings of, of replacing them, you know, would be eighty thousand. The one-time cost to do this would be a hundred and twenty-two thousand. So nothing's changed with that. Those are not the same funds though, I will, will say that.
So it would, it would cost, it would cost us forty-two thousand dollars to do this program?
Yes. Although it's not the same funds, that's just a dollar for dollar comparison. And that's because we would pay the, the benefit, the hundred and twenty-two thousand.
Out of management.
Out of management. This would be a general funds savings.
When it comes down to this, it's like a thank you for years of service.
Yeah, you know, you know, we, we pay into hypers, you know, for all of our employees at nine and a half percent. Nine point four four percent. So the district is always contributing towards the retirement of our employees. And then the employees also have a contribution of around six percent. So there, it, people who leave here, whether we have a program in place or not, have a retirement benefit that the district contributes to. This would be in addition to that.
And when we offered early retirement last time, this is what we did.
This is what we did.
This is the.
And the thought process back then, I agree. I mean, the reason why we do it for the teachers, right, is for our budget.
Yeah, it's a little cost savings, yeah.
And, and when we did it the last time for the classified staff, it was around kind of that, thank you for your service of twenty-five, your commitment to the district. I mean, I think we gotta look at this too of the longevity, you know, potentially. You know, is this something that we want to, to think about?
I think Andrea brings up, if, if you wanted to consider, you know, these are people who, who have classified people who've worked in the district for twenty-five years. A very long time, very long time. We are very appreciative of, of those people. There's people on the list who are at forty, a number of them in thirties. So these are people who have committed themselves to the district.
We are not paying health insurance.
No, that's part of this, no. And we did before.
I remember one of the last times we talked about this, you know, part of the conversation was, you know, instead of rewarding them when they retire, let's try to increase their wages so that, you know, hey, thanks. And my concern is that that's getting harder and harder to do with the state funding not being where I feel it should be, you know, and, and stuff. And, and so I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of this. And I, one thing, the, the only downside I see in, in something like this is we do it here, we do it a few years later. We might do it a, you know, a few, whatever. And it kind of, and I'm using the word forces out, and I don't really like that word, but people think, hey, I'm gonna take advantage of this and they maybe retire before they're ready to retire. I can think we have one special ed teacher who took advantage of the early retirement a few years back and she's back in the classroom now. You know, I mean, she just wasn't ready to retire, but hey, it's a great opportunity, I'm gonna take, take advantage of it. What, is there downside to something, that this is just something that we have in place continually? So that, you know, when somebody reaches that twenty-five years or when they're ready to retire? You know, cause I, I think of some of the people, you know, I, I don't know for sure, but some of the people I think might be, could be eligible for this. I mean, I'd hate to lose a couple, three of those all at the same time.
Yeah.
You know, I, I think primarily, you know, the custodial staff, you know, I mean, and, and, you know, if we'd lose a couple of those at the same time, it might be.
Yeah.
I don't know, so I just, an idea I had, I just wanted to throw it out there about just kind of.
I think a couple of points, Todd, and I think you're exactly right, first of all. You know, we, we, we increased both our food service and our associates' wages during the school year and then negotiated another one. So two, two raises in a year for those people. And I, that, that was part of us trying to work on those numbers and work on those salaries. So, so we have, the board has done that, as you mentioned. Second thing, this benefit is different than when we offered insurance for the teachers. There's no insurance option here, so it would be difficult for many people to take advantage of this prior to the age of sixty-five. Unless they had another option for health insurance or, or just wanted to pay into ours. So I don't, that, that example, wherein we've had that, you gave, you gave an example of a teacher who retires early because the insurance benefit's too good not to take. This doesn't have that. So I think in many cases of our employees, they would probably wait closer to sixty-five. Also, you know, Lisa and I are working on some of this. Being older than sixty-five, you are not eligible for early retirement program by Iowa code. So that's something to consider as well. Because you're no longer early.
Right, I didn't realize that.
I'm, I'm in favor of rewarding people for their service. But I don't want to also get to setting a precedent where every time that we come, we are expected to have, have a program for, for everyone. Cause we might be in a situation where financially or isn't our, our best option to, to do these programs. So I, you know, I'd be in favor of tabling it or thinking about it some more to quite understand.
Yeah, I mean, we're not voting, but I have the same feelings as Jay. I don't know, I think it's gonna take a little while, the process. I'd like to talk just a little bit more about it, but yeah, I, I, the, what is it? Certified staff, we do that because it saves, we have to do it.
Yes.
And it's not a matter of.
Financial.
It's a financial decision purely. And to do this every time we do something like that in the future, five years down the road for the classified staff is that.
But I also want to, I also want to award employees or encourage employees to stay here in longevity when they can also go get a job at Harvest Mutual or any of these places and make substantially more.
So like the management fund, so I mean, yes, it's saving eighty thousand dollars out of general fund, which pays salaries and you can do anything with general fund money. But it's costing us out of the management fund. Management fund is also what we use for the early retirement for the teachers or the certified staff. So I mean, it's affecting potentially that down the road too. What else do we pay out of management fund?
Corporate insurance.
Corporate insurance.
All that liability insurance.
Close to half million dollars.
Yeah, I mean, do we always have a surplus in management?
No.
Unless we levy, unless we.
You know, it's something we levy our, our management, and this is where it's at currently, but you know, we're spending out of it. We.
So at the end of the day, I mean, it's tax.
It is, we levy one point three million dollars on management this year, which is a, a big number, but that was the anticipation of the early retirement.
Well, I, you know, I know why we do the teachers so early, because obviously we want to hire early as possible.
Yeah.
But the ones that we hire there are looking for jobs starting next year, a lot of times. Where here, I do, I don't think there's a harm in waiting and tabling them for a month. Cause I, we're not gonna be able to replace, hire somebody now and say, okay, well, you're not gonna start till next August.
Right.
So we still have time to make.
We would have a deadline. You have to, to use management to pay early retirement. The application has to be approved before April first.
Okay.
So we would probably need it approved to give them, I think by law, we have to give them fifty-five days to make a decision. So probably January, we would have to approve to give them enough days to make a decision to be accepted before April first.
Do you need a motion? I would, I would motion to.
No, no.
No motion.
This is a discussion. And, and we can leave it right where it is right now and Rodney can talk to me about if we want it as an agenda item in December or if we're more comfortable learning more maybe till January.
That's what I, that's what I was gonna motion.
Yeah, I think we have to continue to talk about it, even if we're gonna motion or do something in January or whatever. I, I think it's something to, go back to revisit a little bit. Is five too many, is three enough? I mean, I don't know what the labor shortage area, you know, but all that can be thought about a little bit.
Yeah, yeah.
The projections you guys have built out have got the, uh, teachers, right, modeled out through twenty eighteen. Can, can we model this out?
Yeah, I could put this in the forecast tool also.
That's a good idea.
You know, I could subtract those ten out over whatever, four years and then, you know, see what, what that does.
And I don't know, just, just like we talked about the teachers too, right? And I get your point with Todd's of it's not necessarily, it's much of a timing thing maybe, but also, you know, we've got something. We've got handful on the custodial side and, and we have other people, you know, where it's like, if we did lose three, four, five people in this one area, gosh, that would be a kind of hardship. So anyway, I mean, maybe something to, to think about as well as we will.
By department.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, good discussion, anymore for, for time? All right, then we'll move on to administrative reports. Joe, you didn't have any more, right?
Nope.
Sorry about that. Administrative report, we have elementary admin here, Mrs. Schutzer and Mr. Soodal to talk about the importance of a content-rich curriculum.
All right, so we are here to talk about the importance of content-rich curriculum. We are in our second year of our core knowledge language arts curriculum, which we feel has a deep, you know, content-rich curriculum.
They would know that acronym, cause they, they approved that. So CKLA.
Yes.
The, what we approved a few years ago as our new language arts curriculum. And Mr. Soodal used that acronym correctly there, which is awesome.
Yeah, all right, the next slide there. So the simple view of reading has the formula up there, word recognition times language, language comprehension equals reading comprehension. So word recognition, word recognition includes phonological awareness, phonics, how to blend sounds, to read words, decoding. These things are all explicitly taught in our CKLA curriculum. And we'll talk about the timeframe later on when we do that and how long we do that. Uh, language comprehension has background knowledge, includes vocabulary, language structure, verbal reasoning and literacy knowledge. Those two things, I think the most important thing to remember up there is that multiplication symbol. One times one equals one, which is a reading comprehension. Like point five of word recognition times one of language comprehension does not equal one. So I think that's the most important thing to remember when we talk about reading comprehension today.
Okay, so I'd like you just to read this in your head to yourself. Little reading practice tonight. You can give me a thumbs up in front of your chest when you're finished, like we do with our students. Okay.
You having second graders read that?
What's that?
Are you having second graders read that?
No, I don't. Uh, Mr. Carter, will you flip to the next one?
We'll tell you, we'll tell you the reading level later.
Will you read this one to yourself? All right, so between the two, which one, I mean, anyone want to tell me what the second one was about? This one that we have up right now, what's it about? A baseball game? Can you kind of like see it happening, the batter hits, but he, it gets on base, kind of? How about the first paragraph? Does anyone know what was happening in that first paragraph?
Something with pirates.
What's that?
Pirates.
Oh. This is actually from a British newspaper about the game of cricket. And that, my only hint would have been the ninth wicket. Some people maybe played cricket in PE maybe, or if you've watched a cricket match, but it's not very familiar to us. We don't have a lot of knowledge about the game of cricket, where the game of baseball is more familiar to us. So when we read that, we could understand or visualize what had happened. So on the, this slide here, researchers have done, it's an important, they often refer to it as the baseball study. They had four different types of readers read the same article about baseball. Kids who knew about baseball who were strong readers, kids who knew about baseball who were weak readers, kids who didn't know about baseball who were strong readers and kids who didn't know about baseball and weren't great readers. And you can see that the kids who knew a lot about baseball and were strong readers did the best. And the kids that knew a lot about baseball but weren't the best readers did the second best. So having knowledge about a topic does help. So the researchers gave them all the same article and then asked them comprehension questions. And those students who knew about baseball but didn't, maybe weren't the best readers, still performed better than other students who were stronger readers than they were because they had knowledge about the topic. And they re, I think this first study maybe would have been in the eighties or something, I can't remember for sure. But they found the same results so many times, they basically stopped researching on the topic because it just, there's no point in doing it anymore. Because it's, it's just a fact that if you know something more about it, you're more likely to understand when you read about it.
Which talks about really in this next slide, why knowledge is so important. Studies have consistently shown with the greater amount of background knowledge, you know, the stronger reading comprehension, comprehension you have. So then a child with lower reading skill can partially compensate having a higher degree of background knowledge.
So in CKLA, what we do right now, kindergarten through second grade have one hour of skills. That'd be that word recognition part of the formula that, where they learn to like know letter sounds and phonemic awareness and blend letters to make words and all of that. And then they have one hour of knowledge. And this is where they learn about different topics in just about all different things. I just taught a third grade lesson and I was like, oh gosh, I, I remember learning this one time about our brain and about the cerebrum and cerebellum and medulla and the different parts of the brain. Today, in a lesson I observed, they were learning about all the body systems and how they are interconnected was one of their vocabulary words. And how a swimmer, for example, the kids had to find out what ones, parts of their body systems would they be using? That they learned about the skeletal, skeletal system, the muscular system and the nervous system. And so the kids had to explain that. So that's some of the things they learn in knowledge and we'll talk more about that. Third grade, they don't have skills and knowledge separated as much. There's different parts of the lessons that work on word recognition and on the language comprehension pieces with the vocabulary and all that. And then in fourth grade, it goes down to ninety minutes of that combined, it's not two separate distinct times. It's all just kind of at one time. But all grades incorporate both parts of that simple view of reading formula.
As we talked about, the read alouds during our knowledge time focuses on the oral, oral language development, the vocabulary, the questions that's asked during that. Um, the discussions they have during that as well too. I think the most important thing to know about it too is, you know, we want to recall that memory from that knowledge. So a lot of our topics build upon each other. So for example, in kindergarten, they're talking about the five senses. In first grade, they learn about body parts of the systems. And then when they get to second and third grade, you know, goes into a deeper dive on those systems with that. So on the next slide there, as you see, this is kind of a breakdown of all of them, K through A of how they all, it's kind of hard to read, hard to read from back here anyway. But it shows how they interconnect together and how knowledge builds upon knowledge to help them develop that deeper understanding.
And when the ELA leads met a, a month or so ago, it was interesting to hear, you know, they have a teacher from each grade level and they were talking about, oh, well, my kids are in this and this and this. And how, you know, there may be some basic systems and then all of a sudden in first grade, they're learning how many bones are in the body and it, it just gets deeper and deeper. And so our knowledge keeps building and we keep thinking that each year we, the kids have this, they'll know more about it when the teacher brings it up and talks about this. The kids will be like, oh yeah, well, we learned about that in first grade or whatever. And some of our teachers even made connections to their kids in middle school and high school of the same topics that they may be learning about in biology or whatever.
And it just helps them recall it from their working memory too, as you keep repeating it, you know, going over it and going deeper into it year after year.
And we created a short video, this also came from our ELA lead meeting, when the teachers were talking about all the, and they were also talking about like they'd be out to eat with grandparents or whatever. And the kids were talking about, oh my gosh, I learned this and this and this at school today. And so we wanted to share some of the things our kids have learned in their knowledge class. And so we wanted to share some of the things our kids have learned in their knowledge class. Who were those two people we learned about? What were those two people?
Helen Keller and.
Charles, can you tell us something about one of them?
Rachel, mine, um, my still saying.
When did he become blind, can you remember?
When she was six.
Why?
Cause he got, cause he got an eye disease.
She got an eye disease and she got, uh, her ears, she couldn't hear and she could barely even talk.
Oh, what's that called when a person can't hear?
Death.
So what is that?
It took twenty years to make it one hundred thousand people.
And it took two, and it took two point feet of the, and there's fifty years to build it. But the very top is gone, so you can make this guy die, so God help him.
How tall was it?
It was, um, four hundred and fifty feet.
Who was it built for?
It was built for the little two feet. He thought it was so past, he thought it was so powerful, he wanted the biggest and, and largest pyramid he could get.
I mean, so I have a couple of questions I want to ask you, okay? Uh, the first one is how were Sparta and Athens different?
Sparta was, had a really hard life and you're like, once you turn seven, you're like go to war.
And in Athens, it was a happy, healthy place where you can almost do all of these things you can't do in Sparta.
Can you tell me about the trees in Athens?
Trees, where you can do a bunch of things with them, like you can turn them into stuff that's good for your skin. And you can take the wood and carve stuff in it and it'll just grow, and the tree will grow back the next year.
All right. Tell me about the Greek god or goddesses you've learned about.
Zeus, um, he was the king of all the gods and goddesses and the god of lightning.
Other than Earth?
Yeah.
You guys have learned about a lot of cool different animals.
Yeah, it's, it's a.
Okay, we learned about Jane Goodall.
Okay, what about Jane Goodall?
So she studied, she, she studied her whole life to studying chimpanzees and what she found out that they were endangered because people got cutting down their trees. She had hired to do so. And some of them would be playful, some of them would be mean to Jane Goodall.
All right, we're going to switch to unit two. Unit two, you've been learning about medieval times, right? Tell me one thing, Matthias, tell me one thing you've learned in unit two.
The King Henry the Third was nine years old when he was first king.
Uh, I, I figured out that, uh, there were, uh, some nicknames. So, uh, Richard the First was called Lionhearted William the First, uh, William the Second, I forgot. Uh, was called a conqueror and that's all I remember. And, uh, for Henry the Second, uh, he got married to a queen, uh, the Queen of France and she was, uh, from a very high quality of nobles.
So would you rather be a serf or a noble person or a king? Why?
Um, I'd rather be a king, cause serfs had to do like, they didn't get to learn like anything. Um, but like kings and queens got to read, learn how to read and write and play music and show.
So just to put it simply, the more you know about a topic, so we don't have the second graders reading about cricket. I just wanted to have you guys speak about that. But the more you know about a topic, the easier it is to read a text, to understand and retain it, retain information. So as we build our knowledge block, um, we just think that we're going to have kid, students who have, they're going to have a lot of information about a variety of topics, which will hopefully help them, um, read and comprehend things throughout their whole life.
So when they're talking about Athens and Sparta, that's not in social studies, that's in.
I just, you notice, I mean, like when you look at that one chart, that graphic organization, there's a lot of science in reading involved and that like the body systems are science. And then there's, I think it starts off with the colonial towns with kindergarten, it builds up then all the way through. Um, so I think a lot of that is involved in, or included in our CKLA knowledge portions.
Then are the science and social studies curriculum tied into this too to reinforce and, or is that completely separate?
Right now, it's just, it's separate.
Separate right now?
Yeah. Like in fourth grade, they're learning about, um, they're finishing a poetry unit in CKLA and, um, they're learning about energy in science, so they aren't completely connected. But we're hoping that, like the animal classification unit in third grade, um, then they do a science unit on animals later down the road though.
Cause it kind of might, you know, fifty years ago when I was in college and thematic units was a big thing, you know, I just kind of immersed in a topic and do all your, you know.
They learn a lot and they remember a lot of all those things that they learn, it's pretty amazing.
I learned about the inner ear the other night.
Yes. And that's one thing we want to do is to find a good way for, um, families to talk to their students about, like what, you know, like tell me something you learned today. And then if they tell you the three parts of the ear or something like that, more than just like, how was school today or whatever? Because I think sometimes they can go home and talk about Ray Charles for ten minutes and it's like a little kindergartner telling about Jane Goodall, things like that, that as a parent, you may not know to ask those questions. So we want to, and we send home, um, like unit overview letters or whatever, that kind of tells what they're learning about. But I think sometimes that's a challenge for parents and the kids have a lot to tell if you kind of ask them the right questions.
Well, thank you for your time today. Thank you. All right, um, we'll continue on then with, uh, what's our next, old business, uh, second reading of board policies.
The, so this is the second reading, um, we review these in October. Uh, the district does not have policy four oh five eight, which is the licensed employee evaluation. Uh, we do have legal requirements. What's the new four oh five eight, but we also need this as a board policy. So we want to, uh, recommend this, or adopt, um, the Iowa, IASB recommended policy to, to match what we have in our procedures and collective bargaining agreement. Um, four oh eight two, licensed employee publication, um, just right there, or creation material. Four oh eight three, licensed employee tutoring are also being reviewed. What we have currently matches, um, the IASB recommendations. So this is the second reading, so we will need, um, a motion of this today.
Feel that they're beneficial policies and I'll make a motion to approve. Thank you, Jay, do you have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Andrea, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Second reading approved. All right, new business, uh, looking at first reading of a policy.
First reading, so there, you know, there's more in this November, um, there we go, uh, November fall policy updates. Uh, these are all updates that are from the IASB primer update. Uh, the first change is in policy four oh one one, uh, equal opportunity, uh, equal employment opportunity. It's an update to the paragraph graph involving background checks. It also updates the equal employment opportunity address and contact, um, both which are required by a lot of part of the policy. Second change is in five oh three one, student conduct, five oh three oh one, R one, student conduct. We don't have R one, so this, this needs to be adopted. It's a new addition, it includes a probation, in-school suspension, out-of-school suspension, and suspension of a special education student. Again, does reflect our practice, just not something we have in our policy that needs to be. And then the final piece is, um, model policy for discipline, five oh three oh eight, R one. So this, this was, um, if you remember, there's a link to it in your, in the general. When we approved the handbooks, I talked about, uh, we would need to make an amendment to our, our handbooks. And that's because there was legislation that was passed last legislative session that said every district had to have this type of policy, um, discipline policy. And the Department of Ed would offer a model of that. And we just received that model and then we went through it, um, as a administrative team. And this is what we have come up. So the, in blue are the parts that you have to have in your policy. You have to have this defined threat of violence. And then this is the definition they gave us, that you have to have this defined incident of violence, defined injury, defined property damage, and defined assault. And then what the legislative piece was, is that there has to be an escalated response. Um, and it has to be by grade level, so it's pre-K two, three, five, uh, six, eight, and high school. These are minimums, because you'll see lots of may, you know. So a, um, a kindergarten student has a behavior incident, um, these are minimums, that we would, um, contact a parent or guardian, um, that we, we may, um, ask for a conference with that parent or guardian and so on. So it just, um, it grows from the first level to the second level to the third level. Uh, and that, that is what had to be part of the policy. I do believe this policy reflects our practice, like, you know, this is what our, our administrators do at all levels. Um, but it now has to be part of our board policy and it has to be part of all of our handbooks. Um, this is the first reading of this, so there's nothing to do with this tonight, um, just like the other first readings, but we can, we can bring it back and approve it in, in December.
All right, any questions? Okay, please review those and we'll bring it back and look at it in December. Um, approved sharing agreements in the girls, with girls wrestling.
We've had three schools, Bishop Garrigan, North Union, North Iowa inquire about sharing girls wrestling. Uh, we had sharing agreements with both North Union and North Iowa last year with kids who participated for us. Um, Bishop Garrigan, um, is, is the addition. Currently, there are not any classifications in high school wrestling. That's always something to consider in a sharing agreement. Will sharing change our class? Um, but there aren't classifications currently in high school girls wrestling. So I would recommend, um, two hundred dollars a wrestler and then if they provide their transportation to Algonah High School. But that two hundred dollars, that is what our agreement was last year with North Iowa and North Union as well.
How does this affect? So I get it's important to share, but I am not a huge fan of sharing when it takes away opportunities from our girls.
Yeah.
And so there's a lot of schools that don't have full teams like we do. We have the luxury of having a very big team right now. And I've been at matches where not every girl's getting to wrestle.
Yeah.
You know, so now we're bringing in kids from other schools that are, our girls are getting to wrestle. So I mean, I.
I, I think, Grant, I think that's a really good, um, point to bring up. Um, we want, um, you know, we want to help other districts and have, have experiences that are good for their kids and ours. Um, I think when it.
But not at the cost of our kids.
When our, when our girls' students lose an opportunity, it's something to consider. Um, our girls' wrestling team last year, you know, first year of a sanctioned girls' wrestling team, uh, we, we wouldn't have had a full lineup without, and, and didn't have a full lineup, even with, uh, some kids from North Union and North Iowa. I, I don't know about our lineup this year, um, but there's, there's a lot of kids. We have twenty-seven girls for fourteen spots. So I'm sure there's some competition for certain spots.
That's a good point.
Yep.
So I just, I, I'm hesitant because I don't know, you know, but I just don't, you know, I don't know. I mean, I get it.
I definitely see the benefit for those schools. What's the benefit for Algonah schools?
Bigger team camaraderie, you know, full lineup, you know, it's.
Full lineup if you weren't able to have one.
Those girls have the opportunity, if they chose to, or they're open enrollment to wrestle, or does they, or not?
Yeah, you know, there's no, there's no deadlines for open enrollment. There is still the ninety days of non varsity competition.
Okay, can't that be waived with both districts?
It can be, yes, it can be.
Does this increase our classification?
Uh, in girls' wrestling, currently there is not classification, so it doesn't.
Otherwise told by wrestling coaches, if they could have more kids in the practice room, it gave more kids a chance to wrestle off against other kids and not a hundred and ten pounder versus a hundred and seventy pounder in the room. So, you know, more kids have the advantage too for making our kids stronger.
This is something that, um, and we, we started to have this discussion last year, I think, discussing some sharing agreements. And I went to Mr. Jacobson and to our head wrestling coaches and, um, all three of them certainly would be in favor of these agreements. And I think that certainly is a factor in that time, um, more kids, the room is better. You know, the competition's better, the practice is better.
That's good to know too.
I just think it needs to be looked at as the program grows. I, just because we do it one year doesn't mean that we need to do it every year and they can't count on it, because it's just.
Do we do it in boys?
We do do it in boys with, there's Garrigan kids that come over.
Yeah, we have a sharing agreement with Garrigan also.
And it's, you know, it hasn't been a huge deal, but I think it is going to affect. I mean, I, I'll be honest, I don't, I mean, I, Algonah is Algonah, it's the public school. Like if you're here, you're here, you know? And so like, you know, if you start to have, competition is good and that, but I mean, it's a, you know, say you start to have four or five Garrigan kids that are in the starting lineup for the varsity and then you have two Algonah kids behind them, you know, that are, have worked and do it. It's just, there's not a spot for them. Is that fair to the Algonah kids? I don't know.
Yeah, when I talked to our wrestling coaches about this previously, um, one of the points they mentioned was in our youth programs, there, there's just one youth program, no matter what school you go to. Uh, so in our, in our wrestling coaches' eyes, they're all coming through that youth program and they're all in our high school program, again, regardless of what high school, which was a, a good perspective to get from that, that's how they look at it. But, but I think you're right, and I think it is certainly valuable to look at on a year-to-year basis.
If you want to be here in Algonah, be here in Algonah.
We can choose.
What's that?
Don't necessarily get to pick and choose what sport, so we're going to participate with which school.
Yeah.
Like I said, I think it's good to monitor every year. Um, maybe we're still young and, or, you know, starting enough with the girls' wrestling and it's still valuable to do it, but let's definitely keep an eye on it or keep a, listen to our coaches and.
Yeah.
And see where we are. So I guess we're first, we need a motion then if we want to move forward to approve these, um, sharing agreements.
I mean, I'll make a motion, I think it's, you trust the coaches, but I think at the end of the day, I think we need to revisit it each year and do what's best for the Algonah kids in our district. So if it's, if we look at the program and we have three Algonah girls that are not getting to participate and get matches, I mean, I'm not even talking about varsity level and competition. I mean, there's just, there's just not sometimes enough matches. I mean, kids are going to meets and there's not even, they don't get to wrestle. They don't get to participate at all, because there's, you know, other kids. That's what I'm worried about, so I don't know enough about it, but I think it needs to be talked about quite a bit in the future as we look at these agreements, as things grow, boys and girls, and any sport that we do, so.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Dad, we have a motion and a second, do we have any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion for, approve for the sharing agreements. Uh, teacher associate substitute rates.
I, I would propose increasing the teacher associate substitute rate. It previously was, um, ten dollars and forty cents, uh, that which was lower than what our hiring rate was. And if you remember, we increased our hiring rate during the school year last year to thirteen. So I, I would make a proposal to increase the teacher associate subrate to eleven fifteen, or you could consider raising it to thirteen, uh, which is what our hiring rate is for teacher associates. I think, you know, ten forty's too low, eleven fifteen's too low. You know, the, these, these are difficult positions to get. It's difficult to get people to sub for teacher associates or teachers. Um, anything we can do to make that situation ensure, I think, is valuable for our kids.
Surprised we even have teacher associates subs.
I, I think the, the great people that we have that do it, um, they, they like to be around our kids and they like to help out our kids and we're, I think we're lucky to have them.
It feels like they'd be working somewhere else or, you know, hard to find people just that aren't working and available to sub like that. So.
Yeah, and you look at what is available for eleven fifteen or thirteen dollars now in the community and that kind of stuff, and you can only imagine some of the challenges in getting these folks in and then what, you know, what they have to contend with. So if I'm reading this right, Joe, you, you would, uh, recommend going as high as thirteen at this point? All right, I'd make a motion to, um, change our teacher associate substitute rate, uh, to thirteen dollars an hour.
I'll second that. And this would begin immediately, I mean, or?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second to raise the teacher associate subrate to thirteen an hour, any further discussion?
Any idea how much this costs total for the district? Small?
Yeah.
Less than ten thousand a year?
Yeah, that's, yeah. Yeah, for sure.
Well, and we're looking at, you're basically, you know, not the full thirteen, we're looking at about two fifty increase. You know, we're already paying ten forty.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, just.
Yeah.
So. All right, uh, any further discussion? Hearing none then, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries to raise the rate to thirteen an hour. Um, okay, the next ones, we're gonna be talking a little bit about resolutions and you'll see in your packet also that there are some green.
Yeah.
Uh, the motions will need to, once we discuss them, will need to, uh, be read that way. Uh, and then we also will have roll calls with each one.
So there's, there's three resolutions, which we'll all do separately. Uh, these, these all involve the Fieldhouse Project. Uh, they're resolutions, um, for the nineteen, nineteen ninety seven, fifty thousand of school infrastructure sales, service, and use of tax revenue. So the first resolution is appointing U M B Bank of Des Moines as the paying agent between the district and Iowa State Bank. Um, the resolution, as Rodney said, is, is there in green, uh, to approve U M B as the paying agent between the two.
I make a motion to approve the resolution appointing paying agent, bond register, and transfer agent agreement, and authorizing the execution of the same. I have no idea what I just said.
So was that like the cricket thing we write?
A little bit like that.
Thank you, uh, we do have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Todd, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, Lisa will do a roll call for us.
Davis?
Yes.
Limbaugh?
Yes.
Lojic?
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Bensy?
Yes.
So in the, we did these, Lisa and I were putting this stuff together, you know, I would read the same thing, Andrea, and I'm like, I, I gotta put this in simple words. So my, my words are the black ones, the green come from our, our lawyers.
But we gotta say the green.
Yeah.
We gotta make sure.
So the second resolution is the approval of our tax exempt certificate, that is, that's a simple, simply approving our tax exemption as opposed to the district.
Make the motion approval of the tax exemption certificate. Thanks, Jay, do we have a second?
Second motion.
Thanks, Tom, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Ready for roll call, Dave?
Davis?
Yes.
Limbaugh?
Yes.
Lojic?
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Bensy?
Yes.
And then our third one.
The third one is approving the use of sales tax dollars for this project. Anytime you use sales tax dollars, um, in, in a, in a project, you have to get a resolution to.
We're not approving the Fieldhouse anything, this is just.
That was already done.
No, but we're saying we're, we're preparing it if we like the bids to have the funds available.
All right, we do need a, someone to, uh, motion the resolution as written.
I do a resolution authorizing the terms of issuance and providing for and securing the payment of school infrastructure, sales, services, and use.
Thanks, Tom, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Todd, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, ready for roll call?
Davis?
Yes.
Limbaugh?
Yes.
Lojic?
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Bensy?
Yes.
All right, um, motion approved, resolution approved. All right, we're going into maybe something, uh, the Ella Thompson.
Yeah, trumps. Almost kind of a history, history lesson with this too. So the, the Thompson Scholarship Fund, um, was established in nineteen fifty five by William Thompson of La Jolla, California. Uh, the beneficiary of the trust is Algonah High School and has been since nineteen fifty five. Uh, part of the trust agreement says that the money will always be in a national bank. Actually, in nineteen fifty five, that was a really big deal, right? Um, we, we've continued to honor, uh, Mr. Thompson's, um, will to the letter and plan to continue to. Uh, most recently, the money has been in, uh, with Bank of America, um, out of Chicago, which recently got out of the trust business. Uh, so Bank of America has worked with us to find, um, the American National Bank of Texas as a replacement. So per the, um, will of William E. Thompson of nineteen fifty five, the trust agreement says that only the Algonah Community School Board can approve a successor trustee. That's what we're doing tonight, we are approving, uh, the American National Bank of Texas as now the trustee of the Thompson Fund.
Why did they want it in a national bank?
I'm sure it had to do with, um, securing of funds, you know, that would be, you know, before the FDIC is what it is now.
So if we wanted it to be a local bank?
Um, it would go against our, the original will of William E. Thompson.
But that was before there was FDIC.
Yep, and, and we, we've had our lawyers look at this, they recommend continuing with the, as it's written.
How many million dollars is it now?
Uh.
About three hundred.
It, it, it gives out almost three hundred thousand a year to our graduates. The Thompson Fund is our, um, entirely needs-based scholarship.
Okay.
Which usually has three tiers to it, um, there could be twenty, twenty students who receive this, not more than that probably, maybe almost forty.
Usually more than that.
Yeah. So it's a tremendous, um, scholarship that was established by Mr. Thompson and his wife and, you know, a great piece that the district's able to have for the kids.
This is completely separate from the foundation?
It is completely separate from the foundation, which is why I put in there that in the original, um, will, Algonah Community Schools, uh, nineteen fifty five would have been pre foundation. Now it probably would be part of the foundation, but we've, we've continued to honor as it was written in nineteen fifty five.
I'll motion to approve.
Thanks, Brad, do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thanks, Tom, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Should I ask, but like, is there a cost for these banks to manage a trust like this?
Um, they, yeah, I'm sure there, there's some expenses to it, there wouldn't be any, all of our, um, the foundation stuff has cost with it, you know, expenses with it as well.
I mean, it'd just be nice for our local banks to have.
Could, could we put it in front of a judge to have it?
Uh, probably.
Modify?
Yeah.
If we wanted to.
Yeah.
I mean, if this gentleman was that generous to do this, like, it wouldn't be out of, I mean, he just did it the best way that he thought it did with his lawyers at the time to have secure funds, right? But now if it's FDIC insured and our banks aren't here in town.
Be nice to have it here instead of.
Yeah.
I'd have to split it up if you, I don't know, one day you would all or not, I don't know.
Pardon the thing.
That's up, I don't know. Yeah, I, I don't know.
All of our foundation steps in one place, right?
Okay.
It would just be something to have, but I mean, if our lawyers say do it, it's not that big a deal, but is there anybody from the family that's left?
I don't believe they've been in contact with the family for some time. My knowledge of it came from, um, some, some members of the foundation who really, um, kind of reviewed it annually, because that, you know, that's what we do, you know, we need a Bank of America review, you know, how, how it's working, where the dollars are. That's, that's how I learned of all that, then I got the book this year to read it, what it actually says.
All right, um, open enrollment, we'll move on to this out.
We have one open enrollment, um, this, this student has met all guidelines for approval.
Motion to approve the open enrollment, okay?
Second.
Thank you, a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Open enrollment approved. Uh, contracts?
Contracts, we have a number of, uh, contracts. Brent Owen, volunteer high school girls wrestling.
So that's supposed to, that's supposed to be high school and middle school?
And middle school girls wrestling.
Okay.
Brian Morgan, volunteer high school, middle school boys wrestling. Jeremy Rumel, volunteer high school, volunteer middle school boys wrestling. Jay Beustrom, volunteer high school boys wrestling. Corey Beustrom, volunteer high school boys wrestling. Chad Slagel, volunteer high school boys wrestling. Cole Johnson as a middle school boys wrestling coach. Adriana Posey as our, as a middle school teacher associate. Trevor Arnold as freshman boys basketball. Blair Bradley was being reassigned for one year, his reassignment is now in seventh grade boys basketball for one year only. Cameron Rendoni, volunteer high school boys basketball. And Paul Jorgensen as a bus driver. We had a bus driver resignation early in the school year, really before the school year started, and we've covered that route with substitutes up to this point. Uh, and Jordan LeBach, high school wrestling coach.
I'm moving to approve all the contracts. Thanks, Tom, we have a second.
Second.
Thanks, Andrea, uh, motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the contracts, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Contracts approved. Thank you, everyone, thank you for meeting a lot of good discussion tonight and something for us to think about moving forward with you all. Need a motion for adjournment?
Motion adjourned.
Thank you, we're second. So, yeah, we are adjourned then, thank you.